Good evening, the school board meeting for August 22nd, 2017 is now in session. We would like to thank all of you who are in attendance with us in person or watching the meeting from another location for investing your time and energy to join us. We appreciate and applaud your commitment to partnering with us in support of our schools, our students, our staff, and our community. Thank you for being active participants in the process. Pam, roll call please.
Mrs. Belford.
Present.
Mr. Craig.
Present.
Mrs. Duskovich.
Present.
Mr. Susan.
Present.
Mr. Ziegler.
Present.
Please join me for a moment of silence as we mourn the loss of a member of our BPS family, Austin Kendall, a student at Pompe High School. Thank you. This evening, I would like to ask Matt Reed, Assistant Superintendent of Government and Community Relations, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. I would like to offer my fellow board members and Dr. Blackburn the opportunity to recognize staff, students, or community members before we get into the agenda. Ms. Duskovich?
Sure, I'll take the opportunity. I have three recognitions that I would like to throw out this evening. First is Nancy Hauser, our gifted and advanced high school programs. Is that on? Is that working? She held a fantastic day workshop gifted meeting for all the gifted teachers in the district and since it looks like we hopefully are going to be moving forward with growing our gifted program, I'm just excited that she's revved up about it and that she has taken the time to give them instruction for the year. I attended parts of the meeting and it was a very productive. I hope that especially the new gifted teachers that were there found it very helpful. The second one is our Brevard School Counselors Association Group and their acting president, Ms. Kim Anders. Dr. Blackburn and Mr. Craig and I attended their monthly meeting and it seems that they're a growing team and they're getting stronger and they're really taking their role as leaders with the counseling association seriously and making some strides and they were doing a lot of collaborations. So I would hope that if you're a school council, you're considered joining their group so that they can get stronger. And last but not least, Dr. Theddy, again, you do such great work and she's really pushing forward with her team on our suicide awareness program and has produced for us this week a bulleted list with explanations of all the programs and all the things we have in place for our staff to be trained and for our students to be prepared. And so I just appreciate the work you're doing on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Craig?
Thank you. I'll echo the guidance counselor meeting. That was really enjoyable and learned quite a bit. The good news was I heard a lot of great comments about where actually getting to be guidance counselors this year. So that's great. We've still got some work to do and we know that and we took some good notes and I know Dr. Blackburn will continue to make sure that those individuals have the tools that they need to succeed and to guide our students throughout their educational career. So that was fun. First day of school was awesome. Got to go to quite a few different places. Met up with Dr. Blackburn at Myla Elementary in the afternoon. Got a quick tour. We met with a couple of classrooms. Got to see what they were doing on their first day. You know, as soon as you walk in, the campus is beautiful and the first thing Kelly Dupree said was, you know, thanks to our partnerships on the island with Grace United Methodist, First Baptist Church of Merritt Island. They came and they have spruced up the whole place and put down, you know, mulch and new plants and everything. It looked great. So it's exciting to see those partnerships, community partnerships flourish. They made specific mention of our facilities team and they helped to rebuild or to repair their playground that had some storm damage. And so I really appreciate everything Dane, you and your team are doing on an individual basis for schools as they continue to try and give a great facility. And thanks to Caroline Glenn for following Dr. Blackburn around all day and making sure that we got some good coverage of the first day. So thank you very much. I feel like I'm always mentioning them and it's not because I'm partial to Georgiana, but once again, I got an email this week that Georgiana United Methodist Church on Merritt Island, "Welcome the new principal at Tropical." Asked her how they could best partner and she said, "I could really use some help purchasing an iStation." And so the church turned around and bought the iStation reading program for Tropical Elementary for this year, which is a cost of about $6,000. Just really another great way of showing how our community jumps up and supports the education of our students and we truly, we can't do it without our community partners. And that's just an example. And finally, on our agenda tonight, we're approving the resignation of Maggie Bellato, who was, or is the, was, I guess, until the beginning, the head of school psychology. I'm a friend of Maggie's, but she also impacted my family through my son quite a bit while she was here. I know we will miss her quite a bit and I thank her for all the work that she's done for the Brevard students.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Mr. Ziegler?
So, first day of school, there was a group that really needs to get some recognition. Our police departments really step up in a big way to not just presence at our schools, but in the traffic patterns, which we all have to readapt to with kids walking, excessive number of cars driving to the schools. So I want to thank all of the different agencies that stepped up and put the extra manpower out for that. And also like to thank all the, and welcome all the new SROs to our schools who weren't really sure what they were getting into, but hopefully they'll realize that they are extremely important to the kids, to us, to security and our community. So thank you to all the agencies that help us out.
Thank you, Mr. Ziegler. Mr. Susan?
Thank you. I wanted to say thanks to Stephanie Archer's office and some of the STEM people like Carrie Cupick, who brought Cyber Patriot to us. It's a collaboration between Northrop Grumman and the Air Force. You guys have a little pamphlet and a pen. They're really excited. It's no cost to our district. It's online and it kind of fills the gap of our coding deficiency that we have inside of our district that we're doing next year that we're bringing onboard. But it's for K through 12 competitions. It's an amazing program for them and I wanted to say thanks to Stephanie Archer and her office for bringing that on. I also wanted to say thank you to Dr. Blackburn for challenging all of the schools to going out and getting into the community. Jeremy Salmon from O'Gally High School put together one of the best programs I've ever seen. Business partners, mayors, pastors from all the churches, and all the principals in one room for all of his feeders, having collaboration among what they can do to make the environment and the schools and everything else better. That was the best thing I've probably ever seen as far as a district-wide initiative to pull all those groups together. And a lot of it goes to what your directive is, is to get out there because you challenged them to get done before you got there. So I think that that was an amazing thing and I wanted to give a shout out to Jeremy Salmon. Also wanted to give a shout out to Stephanie Hall at Sable Elementary. She's actually working with Bay Meadows Trailer Park and she's in there trying to get the kids at the source, 110 elementary school kids that live inside of the trailer park that we went over there and met with to try to create programs and mentorships with what Jeremy put together at O'Gally so that we can get inside there. That's amazing to catch them right where they're at. And I wanted to say thank you to Mr. Lindeman and Mr. Theodore for spending the time to go over, many of you guys know, Vieira's busting at the seams. Schools are out of control. I mean, percentages wise, projections are way above what they thought they would be and they're putting in between 26 and 5,000 homes in the next couple of years. That's amazing. So I just wanted to say thank you for, Mr. Lindeman, for sitting down with me for a couple hours, showing me where all the growth's at and everything else so we can make our projection numbers because we got some decisions to make on boundaries. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Susan and Dr. Blackburn. Any recognition?
Really, Mrs. Belford, just to everyone that worked so hard over the summer to get us ready for the first day of school. Many of us were out visiting schools that morning and it seemed like by 8:30, 9 o'clock, it was as if school had been running for the last two months or three months. It was just a seamless transition to the new school year. So everyone throughout the organization and parents for telling their kids to go to bed early on that last night. Everything was just amazing. You may not have heard, but yesterday there was actually a solar eclipse that a lot of people participated in and that was a real treat also. I actually played hooky in one of my meetings yesterday and kept running outside to take a look. I would say the most outrageous story actually that I heard from a family was a family that flew yesterday morning to Atlanta and then from Atlanta drove a couple of hours north into the Carolinas to have like a perfect view of the eclipse and then flew back this morning and perfect attendance for the children in that family is still intact. So that was pretty amazing.
Nice.
So great start to what's going to be a phenomenal year. Thank you to everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn. One of the benefits of going last is oftentimes the recognition that I would put out there has been covered. So like Dr. Blackburn, thank you so much to everyone for ensuring that we had a wonderful first day of school. We had a new initiative this year from the Brevard County Firefighters who went out to, I believe, eight of our schools. Very intentionally partnered with our principals to ensure that there was a good showing at the schools to welcome families on the first day. I know up in my neck of the woods, City of Titusville came out full swing. We had Titusville Fire Department, Titusville Police Department, we even had code enforcement. Any city vehicles that had lights on it that they could get out to draw attention to the schools, they were there and it was awesome. And they were even there the second day as well. So many, many thanks to them for helping us to keep the children safe on the first day and kicking it off with a bang and things going smoothly. We appreciate it. Also wanted to throw out, it was mentioned, I think Mr. Craig may have mentioned, the facilities team and the work that they did to support our principals was going through the car line at McNair the other day and a new principal there has put in some changes to traffic flow patterns at the school and she was just giving immense praise to our team here at the district, our security and our facilities team for the assistance in trying to iron out some of the wrinkles with traffic flow and make things safer there and have heard multiple times what a great job Facilities has been doing in addressing issues at the schools and providing support. So thank you, Mr. Theodore and your team. Caroline, I have a quick thank you for you and it's kind of an odd one, but I have to throw it out there. Caroline had done an article on us the other day and it was about, I think it was about the internal audit, maybe. I don't even remember the topic of the article because I was so thrown. But someone had made a comment and they clearly had not, they had mixed like four different articles in the reading and so they were mixing the concepts between the articles and making some inaccurate comments based on their confusion about the various articles. And Caroline has done such a good job of really learning the school system inside and out that she actually was able to go on and comment and correct the person's misunderstanding about the district. So kudos to her for helping us to keep the story straight. We appreciate it. And then my very last one, and this goes to Dr. Theddy's team as well. I got an email last week or the week before and it was one of those emails, it was from a parent who has a very high special needs child. The family has, I mean, just if you could think of a list of challenges that you could put together for a family to face, they had just about every one of them between the parents and the children and the home situation. It was just, I looked at it and was overwhelmed at how do we reach out and help this family and help this child to be successful? So I forwarded the email to Dr. Robursky and within minutes, I had an email back, "Absolutely, we'll reach out, we'll take care of it." Parent didn't have transportation. They had to partner with our social worker and the school guidance counselor and of course, our staff here at district, actually go out and meet with the family at their home to get paperwork rolling. There were just lots of hurdles to jump, but they worked really, really hard to make sure that they could meet the needs of that family and get them moving in the right direction. And I don't think that our public necessarily realizes that those types of things go on behind the scenes. So for all that you and your team do, thank you. I know it's often not easy, but you're appreciated. And I think that might be it for my recognition. Anyone need to circle back before we move on? Okay. Then that brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Blackburn?
Mrs. Belford and members of the board, on this evening's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, one recognition item, nine consent items, seven action items, and one information item. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public. There were revisions to item A7 on administrative staff recommendations, a revision to item F14 on instructional staff recommendations, a revision to item G20 on department-school-initiated agreements, as well as a revision to item G23 on the job description coordinator communications and engagement program. Consent items, F11 on school board attorney-retainer agreement with Harold Beisline, and F15 on involuntary termination of employee are both additions.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn. What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second. It is moved by Mr. Craig and seconded by Ms. Duskovich to approve, adopt the agenda for August 22nd, 2017. Any discussion? Please vote. Dr. Blackburn?
Thank you, Mrs. Belford. There are three administrative staff members for the board to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Craig. Moved by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mr. Susan. Is there any discussion? And the motion passes 5-0. Mr. Ziegler, are you having microphone issues?
Technically challenged.
Do we need assistance with your mic or is it just?
No, I think it's just the light.
Okay, very good. All right, Dr. Blackburn?
At this time, I would like to take this opportunity to welcome and congratulate Xyliss Price on her reclassification and transfer from the position of literacy coach at Jefferson Middle School to the position of 10-month assistant principal at Melbourne High School.
I want to thank you. I want to thank you and Chad for this opportunity. I'm encouraged that you find the leadership capacity in me and want to continue to grow that. I want to take also the opportunity to thank some of the people that helped me along the way. I think of Roseanne Bennett and Laurel Preston over at Croton Elementary, who walking in the door, they saw leadership capacity and they said they wanted to develop it and they piled on the work and I thankfully took it and learned under them. Thankful for my Jefferson family. Currently, they're not here because we have open house, but it's been an immense opportunity for me to be a resource to them and to learn to be their cheerleader and I'm so thankful for that opportunity with those teachers. Specifically, I would like to name out Nancy Yates, Beverly Neal, Chris Full, Dean Sheer, Lori Spinner. Those people have been amazing and instrumental to me learning about what it is to serve students under different lenses and I'm very thankful for that. Jasmine Delauter for being my mentor and now my friend. I'm super encouraged to see that she is now appointed at McNair and I'm encouraged to see what she's going to do and I can't wait to see how we're going to collaborate now. And last but not least, I'd like to thank my family for all your support. You guys are my biggest cheerleaders and I am thankful for it. Thank you.
Dr. Blackburn, will you please tell us a little bit about our recognition item?
Item B8 is to recognize the recipients of the Principal Achievement Award for Outstanding Leadership and the Outstanding Assistant Principal Achievement Award. Dr. Carol Kent, Deputy Superintendent and Chief Human Resources Officer, will make the presentation. Dr. Kent?
Thank you. Good evening and thank you. It is an honor to announce and award our AP and Principal of the Year for Brevard Public Schools. The Principal Achievement Award for Outstanding Leadership and the Outstanding Assistant Principal Achievement Award were established in 1988 to recognize exemplary principals and assistant principals for their contributions to the schools and communities. The programs honor principals and assistant principals that have spearheaded initiatives to increase student performance, promote safe learning environments, and establish partnerships with parents and community members. This year's nominees were nominated by their peers and selected through a process involving district leadership. At this time, I would like to ask Mr. Rick Fleming, Principal of West Shore Junior/Senior High School, and Candace Jones, Assistant Principal at Anderson Elementary School, along with School Board Chairperson, Misty Belford, Superintendent Blackburn, and Jean Bartelson, Principal of Enterprise Elementary School, and President of the Brevard Association of School Administrators, Gary Shifrin, Executive Director of Brevard Association of School Administrators, and our business partners from Community Credit Union, Deborah Blair, and Meredith Gibson, to join us in recognizing these outstanding administrators tonight. Please, Mr. Shifrin and Ms. Bartelson, if you would like to come to the podium and make some remarks.
Dr. Blackburn, Ms. Belford, school board members, the Brevard Association of School Administrators and Affiliates is proud to participate in this honor for our newly-named Principal and Assistant Principal of the Year. We in BASSA acknowledge that the heart and soul of education is what happens in the classroom with our outstanding teachers. Without them doing the job they do, our students would certainly not be successful as they are in the Brevard Public Schools. As administrators, one of the most important tasks we have is to provide our teachers with the tools necessary to provide the quality education needed in our classrooms. Having said all this, we also know that a school is not very successful without great leaders. Brevard Public Schools is fortunate to have many exceptional administrators who are committed and dedicated to ensuring that our mission is fulfilled. School administrators must be visible, student and teacher-centered, and willing to tackle issues for which there are no easy answers. There are so many tasks our administrators perform on a daily basis, it would be impossible to mention all of them. But some of them include instructional practices, parent involvement, transportation concerns, student and teacher health and wellness, curriculum, behavioral issues, community and business partnerships, professional learning communities, evaluation issues, building morale and relationships, technology, school schedules, and many more. Our honorees have experienced all of the challenges I mentioned and more. They were selected because of what they have accomplished and the respect that they have received from their colleagues. BASSA is honored to have partnered with the Community Credit Union in honoring Candace Jones, Brevard County Assistant Principal of the Year, and my very good friend, Rick Fleming, Brevard County Principal of the Year. Congratulations to both of you and remember, you are representative of all the exceptional school leaders who work both at the school sites as well as here at ESF. And at this time, the BASSA President of the Year, Jean Bartelson, and Deborah Blair and Meredith Gibson, Community Credit Union, will be presenting our honorees with a check for $500 each, as well as a banner that they can display in their schools proclaiming their significant recognition. Thank you very much.
Way to go, Misty. Hold that plant.
I'm going to embarrass her a little bit more. I'm going to, Ms. Jones, I want you to stand there just a little bit so they can learn a little bit more about you. Receiving Brevard's 2017 Outstanding Assistant Principal Award is Candace Jones. Candace has been an educator with Brevard Public Schools for 14 years, serving in the capacity of first and second grade teacher, reading coach, and academic specialist, and the Assistant Principal of Anderson Elementary School since 2011. Ms. Jones earned her bachelor's degree in elementary education from the University of Central Florida in 1992 and master's degree in educational leadership from Walden University in 2007. Ms. Jones has been a leader among elementary schools across the district supporting students and administrators. She has been instrumental in reviewing early warning systems and taking specific action to support our students. She has worked with her teachers to strategically review student data and closely monitor student work in an effort to ensure student success. Her outreach to neighboring school administrative teams to provide support and guidance has been outstanding. She is a dedicated, hardworking, and visionary leader. Congratulations, Ms. Jones, Brevard Public Schools 2017 Assistant Principal of the Year. And Mr. Fleming. Mr. Fleming has been an educator with Brevard- Mr. Fleming has been an educator with Brevard Public Schools for 23 years. He is beginning his 12th year as school principal at West Shore Junior Senior High School, serving the community of Melbourne. Before assuming this role, he served as a principal at Jefferson Middle School for three years. Prior to that, he was an assistant principal at Cocoa Beach Junior Senior High School and Rockledge High School, and a teacher at Hoover Junior High School. Mr. Fleming exemplifies a commitment to continuous improvement and fostering a school-wide culture of ensuring every student reaches his or her highest potential. Mr. Fleming's leadership has led to West Shore Junior Senior High School's ongoing national recognitions as a two-time recipient of the National Blue Ribbon Designation both in 2004 and again in 2014, being ranked as a top 100 school nationally for consecutive years by Newsweek and US News, and the number-one school in Florida, as well as being recognized as a Model AP Capstone School by College Board, which includes Mr. Fleming making presentations nationally and hosting site visits from other schools across our country. Congratulations, Mr. Fleming, Brevard Public Schools 2017 Principal of the Year.
Great job with those plants.
All right, we are now at public comments. The maximum allotted time for each speaker is three minutes. Please be reminded that statements shall be directed to the board chair. No person may address or question board members individually. The board chairperson may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. If an individual does not observe reasonable decorum, the board chairperson may request that individual leave the meeting. Please keep in mind that we often have children present and/or children viewing our board meetings, and we encourage an environment appropriate for their viewing. I request that you speak into the microphone and state your name. We have three speakers this evening, Anthony Calucci, Dan Bennett, and Vanessa Skipper.
Which mic is it?
Which one do you like best?
The shorter one, of course. Okay. My name is Anthony Calucci. I'm the Vice President of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. Welcome back to a new school year. This year, we're enjoying the fruits of our collaborative efforts. There's no PGP this year, so our teachers are concentrating on the kids in front of them instead of making a plan. There are fewer observations and our administrators are out working with teachers and students as they should be instead of marking checkmarks. We have a discipline plan in place that's going to be a great thing for kids. So when we collaborate, we could do outstanding things. This year, I'm hoping to collaborate on an area that we did not last year, and that is a legislative agenda. Because we didn't, we weren't as strong as we could have been last year when it came to legislation. Dan and I have already started meeting with our legislators here in Brevard County. The reps that we've met with so far are willing to work with us on an area that we think is very important, and that area is increasing teacher salaries. Last year, the legislature saw fit to increase teacher pay, but unfortunately, they did not do so through salary. They chose to do more bonuses. And, you know, we explained to them, that's not really what teachers want. They don't want a bonus. Nobody wants to start their career at $40,000 and then 20 years later end their career at $40,000 because they may have gotten $1,200 raises, salaries, bonuses, thank you, each year. So bonuses don't pay the day-to-day bills. Next month, when we speak at the Brevard delegation meeting, we'll ask them to sponsor legislation that includes categorical funding for teacher salaries. We'll suggest that they redirect some of the money from Best and Brightest to pay for this. And I know you believe our pay is important, and we're asking that you make it one of your priorities this year. So together, we need to lobby our delegation and let them know that this is something not only important to teachers, but also to their employer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calucci. Mr. Bennett?
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Blackburn. I'm laughing at myself as I walk up to you. I came up here, I never bring visual aids up here, do I, things for you to look at, and I came up here wanting to wave my tax bill at you. So I grabbed this envelope off the front seat of my car and I opened it up right now and it's a medical bill. I owe a copay to somebody. This is not what I meant to wave at you this evening. But I did receive this week, you'll have to believe me, I did receive my TRIM notice, which is the estimated taxes, and it's pretty much what your taxes are going to be, for the house that I own here in Brevard County. And, you know, everything's broken down. There's 20 or 20, at least 20 different lines on there, from the county commission and all the breakout of everything, from the mosquito to the libraries, several other taxing authorities that I just can't remember off the top of my head because I'm looking at a copay for an Orlando hospital. But there's also the school board assessment. And true to what Penny spoke about when she did the presentation in August, there, I believe, there was a, there's the capital, which is 1.5 mils, there's a discretionary something that goes on there, .748, that's pretty much set by the state. And then there's the portion that goes to operating the schools, which is where salary comes from, and the light bill, and just day-to-day operations, not buying things, but operating. And like every Brevard County homeowner that has a homestead exemption, that portion will go down this year for me. The actual dollars that I will pay to operate the schools will be a reduction. And for me, it was, I believe it was about $44. You're going to have to believe me, I don't have the tax bill here. It won't cover this medical bill. But it's about $44 that my tax bill will go down. Now, that's looking at it from the last column. There's like four columns on there. The first column is what I paid last year, and the fourth column is what I'm going to pay this year. And the next-to-last column is what I would pay if you just kept the millage the same. And if you just kept the millage the same, or something, it's the rollback rate, which is, well, Penny always explains it better than I do. But if you just went with the rollback, I would still get a tax cut. My taxes would still go down. But by rolling it back even further, by doing what the state requires, by cutting it a full .4 mils, I'm saving an additional $4. If it just wasn't rolled back, if I could just be happy with a tax cut, but not the full tax cut, just a lot of a tax cut, but not a whole bunch of more tax cut, then these schools could have an extra $12 million. That was the difference between the Senate plan and the House plan for funding these schools. It was real dollars here in Brevard County. I could got a tax cut, but it just wouldn't have been as much. I urge you to explore the discussion, start the discussion, and explore the possibility of going out to the community and saying, would it be enough every year to get a tax cut on the operations of our schools, but maybe not the full tax cut that the legislature offers? Could we just get most of the tax cut and not all of it? Consider putting a quarter mil on the ballot. It would be optional. You guys could raise it at your own discretion based on how much the legislature cuts it. We still get a tax cut and we could increase funding. It's not too early to start that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Ms. Skipper?
Good evening, Vanessa Skipper, English teacher at Cocoa High, Vice President, Brevard Federation Teachers, and mom. My son, who attends Myla Elementary, is doing his homework over there. And I, yes. Right, he is now. He is now. So yesterday, he did take advantage of the excused absence, but he was lucky that his father took him to the planetarium and had special glasses, and it was a learning experience. You know, he had to do research between the difference between a lunar eclipse and a solar eclipse and explain everything. It's a little concern that maybe not all students got that valuable learning experience when they stayed home. And I think that's maybe a conversation that kind of ties into what my colleagues talked about. How cool would it have been to provide every single student in our county with safety glasses and a lesson, and really take in that moment to embrace and teach our students about this great science experience that's only going to happen once in their lifetime or in an area where they can actually see it at that percentage? And when I was trying to decide what I wanted to talk about tonight, my mind was all over the place. But it all comes back to funding, whether we're talking about funding for teacher raises or we're talking about funding for something like buying safety glasses for every child that attends our school so that we could actually embrace that science moment. I know that at Teachers at Cocoa High, we all met, everybody from every department, met on Wednesday morning to talk about the lesson plans we were going to do by subject level, and to talk about how we were going to engage those students who did come to school, had 17. To me, I just felt like the day was wasted. I knew it wasn't wasted for my son because I knew the experience he was getting was educational and it was provided from the home. But I'm worried about those students who didn't get that moment. We talked about standing together and collaborating with our legislators. Our legislators need to realize that the funding they send us, whether it's from a millage, whether it's from Title I, that money that we get, we use to do good things in our schools. And I'd much rather buy a pair of solar eclipse glasses for every single student in my school than spend billions on standardized testing, that's for sure. I'd rather spend money on that than sending some of our millage money over to charter schools, which I understand we got lucky with that this year. That doesn't mean we're going to get lucky with that next year. So we've got to do one of two things. I'm glad you guys signed on to the lawsuit that you did. There's another one out there. Eight counties are on it against 7069, representing 1 million students statewide. If we're not going to sign on to that lawsuit, we certainly need to build a collaborative relationship together with our legislators, because standing together is the only thing that's going to keep us from falling apart.
Thank you, Ms. Skipper.
Thank you.
The board wishes to thank this evening's speakers. Your willingness to speak to the board is much appreciated. That, Dr. Blackburn, moves us into the consent agenda.
Mrs. Belford and members of the board, there are nine agenda items under this category, one with prior information.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn. Does any board member wish to pull any item from consent?
F-11.
Mr. Ziegler requests F-11. Any other board members wish to pull any items from consent? Very good. Pam, if you would please pull item F-11 for discussion, and then I will entertain a motion to accept the consent items with the exception of F-11.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mr. Susan. Please vote. Mr. Ziegler, your poll on F-11, would you like to motion to open for discussion?
Moved to approve. Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Mr. Craig. Open for discussion, your motion, Mr. Ziegler.
Thank you. First of all, to point out, significant thank you to Harold Biceline for all his many, many, many years of service to this district, the fine job that he's done. It is unfortunately necessary to bring a termination to us because this contract auto-renews if we don't. However, the other reason I'm bringing it up is I am concerned in looking at some of the things that are being done now by our new in-house attorney. Concerned as to whether or not we don't have not, we've not overwhelmed her and we have a capacity issue. We knew going into the internal board attorney that we were most likely looking at an additional attorney somewhere down the road. Our goal was to create capacity, to create more availability for our staff so that they didn't have to worry about every time they had a question or needed somebody to sit with them that they were incurring a charge. And I think that's working out very well. However, I'm not quite sure that the efficiency is quite there yet. I still think there's some growing into that. I think us as a board may not have done a good job on defining and focusing priorities and responsibilities in the onboarding process because we've never done that before. I think that's something that we can take up at a further meeting. However, while I don't want to consider continuing this agreement with a $7,000 a month retainer because that $7,000 was technically for sitting in on meetings, which Mr. Biceline will no longer have to do, but I would like to figure out a way to keep Mr. Biceline in affiliation with us as an additional resource until we figure out whether, how to handle our capacity issue. I don't know about other board members, and no disrespect to Mrs. Enval because I think that she's overwhelmed and I think that's partially our fault, but I'm not sure that responsiveness is what I'm used to when we had, when we're going directly to Harold Biceline. I believe that's a concern that we need to be aware of. I don't know if any other board members have felt that same way, but I have some open issues that I don't have responses to. Maybe they're not as high a priority as some of the other things on the table, but that to me indicates a capacity issue that we need to figure out. Until then, I don't want us to be shorthanded and put too much of a burden on our in-house attorney. I don't know how we continue that, but I'm curious if any board members share that concern. That capacity right now may be an issue.
Mr. Susan, would you like to comment before I do?
No, I agree with the sentiments as far as transitional plan, institutional knowledge, capacity issue, stuff like that. I agree that Harold doesn't need to have a $7,000 retainer, but I do think there needs to be a happy medium, somewhere we can call on just for his institutional knowledge is where I'm truly looking at.
So since as board chair, I have been working most directly with both Ms. Enval and Mr. Biceline throughout this transition period. I would like to provide a little bit of insight as to where we've been, where we are, and where we're going. Mr. Ziegler, to your comments about Ms. Enval not being as responsive as Harold, I would have liked for that to, that particular portion of your comment to be done more respectfully and not in a public meeting, because I think that puts her in a bad situation. To the comment of, you know, where maybe capacity is a challenge at this point, I understand that, and I respect that as well. If you, I don't know if you got an opportunity to look at the spreadsheet that I sent out today. So if you look at the breakdown of the services that Mr. Biceline was providing to the board, not to all of the other staff, because Amy has pretty much taken over with the remainder of a couple lingering things, but she's pretty much taken over that. But the average hours that Mr. Biceline provided to the board was five hours per month. That was what the board was charged for, including Pam. That's what he was charging just for services to board members. So when you pick up the phone and call him, when I pick up the phone and call him, five hours per month is the average. I feel pretty confident that Ms. Enval has the capacity to meet those needs. I think what we do need to do is prioritize and look. If you look at the breakdown on where those services were provided by Mr. Biceline in the past, you can see where there are some trends. A lot of his time was spent on managing outside counsel, which is something that she has taken on, but perhaps we need to look at some of those cases going elsewhere. We have discussed with Mr. Biceline that, the initial discussion with Mr. Biceline was he would be happy to stay on as a consultant for the $7,000 a month retainer fee and increasing his hourly cost to $265 per hour. Currently, $125 per hour. When I called and followed up and spoke with him, he, I said, there's no way we can continue to pay you a retainer. We would certainly like to have the option to use you as outside legal, just like we do our other outside legal counsel, and he agreed that he would do that for $265 an hour. So Ms. Enval is working on drafting a contract with him to that regard. However, because we're having this conversation, I want to point something out which I think is very important. If you look at those five hours per month that Mr. Biceline was charging the board, I think it's very important to look at the specifics. For example- For example, if you look at the December bill, there were two charges for sixty-two-fifty, which is half an hour of labor. One of the charges was to read an email from Pam that said there will be no expulsions on a given date. The other charge for thirty minutes of work was to read an email that said, "We are changing the date of the legislative workshop to blank." So while we will have the freedom to reach out to Mr. Biceline, I think we need to be incredibly cautious because we can't continue to pay thirty minutes of work for what took two minutes. So I don't, I, I want to make it very clear that as Board members, we need to, it needs to be a big deal if we're going to reach out to him. And I think it's something that we probably need to discuss as a Board because it's, those dollars can creep up pretty significantly. There are other concerns in there. If you look at the April bill, he charged half an hour to read an email from one of our constituents who frequently sends emails to various legislative bodies in Brevard County. It was not at all directed to us, had nothing to do with us, but he charged half an hour to read the email and then forward it to me. And it had nothing to do with Brevard County. So we have to be incredibly careful on how we manage that. And I'm not saying Mr. Biceline was trying to take advantage. I think it was just part of the program. And whenever he did anything for the district, there was a charge that was put in for it. But we cannot continue to do that going forward. We just responsibly cannot.
I would agree. I actually had that conversation with him because in reviewing those, I was very dismayed to see the amount of time he would bill for that. So that is again, something we would just have to get under control. And my apologies to Mrs. Enval. I try to explain, I don't believe it's a capability issue. I think it's a, a capacity issue in that we, we may not have, I just, I think we've loaded a lot on and I think that's our fault. I don't think that's her fault, but I just want to make sure that we have the resources available to us. And if need be, I think that based on her input, we need to start figuring out what additional resources she might need. Because I could tell from her schedule, she is, she doesn't have time, I don't think, to eat lunch. And that's not quite, I think she meets over lunch if I looked at your schedule correctly and that's just, that's just not fair. That's, that's a capacity issue. And I, I'm glad that we're finding more uses of legal, that's fantastic. But I am concerned about that capacity because there are times that we need responsiveness and I don't want that to reflect negatively on her. I'm trying to clear it all up here, but let's not, let's, you know, Harold is a wealth of information. If he would accept a higher hourly rate without a retainer, just to have that available to us when we're in a pinch, I think would be very valuable. And I think that Mrs. Duskevich was going to chime in if I'm not throwing you off the spot. I saw you reaching for that button and I interrupted, I'm sorry.
And, and Mr., just to recap, Mr. Biceline has agreed to an hourly rate of 265 to be a contract outside legal for us to reach out to in the event that we need to do that. Ms. Enval is working on that. She has kind of a standard outside legal contract that we'll be getting together and getting to him. I couldn't do that prior to a vote tonight because if we don't have the votes to terminate the contract, then that's, you know, a moot point. So, so when we wrap up tonight, if that's the direction it goes, then Ms. Enval and I will move forward. I also want to, want to point out, as I think all of the Board members are aware, we will be having discussion at our retreat on the 31st as to some processes to put into place and, and maybe some discussion about priority when it comes to legal services. So I think that that will make a difference. You know, one of the things that I talk about in my interpersonal communication class is we as humans have this expectation that people read our minds and that's just not the case. You see it oftentimes, I'm sure, Mr. Ziegler, in your marriage.
I was just, I was just going to go there.
As do all of us. You know, that we expect that someone's going to know what our thoughts and our desires are and the bottom line is that, that people don't. And so I think we have to clearly communicate expectations and then be prepared to provide the support that, that makes those expectations achievable. And I'm quite confident that Ms. Enval will be able to do that. Also want to point out that she just got her paralegal. So, you know, she's, she's just starting to wrap her head around things that are going on.
I realize that.
So I think, I think the staff would agree, she's been doing a phenomenal job and I think working together, we can all ensure that everyone's needs are being met going forward.
Very good.
Ms. Duskevich, did you have comment?
I won't take any more time. I think I just, I concur with what Mr. Ziegler said on many of his points. And I'm thankful that we're going to discuss it and explore it and prioritize. And I, I hope we set up a plan, maybe some guidance of when we can reach out, when we should reach out to Harold or rely on Amy or it's, it's all kind of vague at this point. So I, I like a little more structure.
Very good.
Very good. I will make sure that that comes up on our retreat discussion. Mr. Craig, any comments?
Well, let me say that I think Ms. Enval's doing a phenomenal job. I don't believe that, I, I believe that, that she should be the one that, that manages her time. And if she needs outside assistance, then that should be her. It should not be the Board with a cafeteria plan of attorneys to pick from. That is not the intent and I think that is a really, really bad road to go down. And I think Ms. Enval has, has made an enormous impact in this district in the short time she's been here. I can't probably pick out a single person in the back row who has not utilized her and been just thrilled that they had someone that they could pick up the phone and call or bring into a meeting or bounce an idea off of right now. And that was the intent and I think she's doing a great job at it. So.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Ms. Duskevich, you look like you want to say something?
Yeah, I, I'm curious, Mr. Craig, you say a, a variety of attorneys to choose from. Do you not support us keeping Harold on at a higher retainer rate to contact as needed?
Not for us to re-contact as needed? Absolutely not. That is our Board Attorney, right there.
That's not an action for right now anyhow. So right now, it's just the action on the table. We can discuss that at a future time once you get more information for us.
Very good. Any additional comment?
No, ma'am.
All right. Then I will call for a vote. Do you need a voice vote, Pam?
Nope. Go ahead, voice vote.
All right, then I will take, oh, there it is. Maybe? Yay.
Yes.
And the motion passes five-zero. All right, we will move on to the action agenda. Dr. Blackburn.
There are seven items for your consideration. The first one is item G-19 on purchasing solicitations.
What are the wishes of the Board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Mr. Craig to approve item G-19. Is there any discussion? Please vote. The motion passes five-zero. Dr. Blackburn.
The next one is item G-20 on department-school initiated agreements.
What are the wishes of the Board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Mr. Ziegler. Welcome to the party, Mr. Ziegler. Is there any discussion? Please vote. The motion passes five-zero. Dr. Blackburn.
The next one is item G-20 on department-school initiated agreements.
What are the wishes of the Board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Mr. Ziegler. Welcome to the party, Mr. Ziegler. Is there any discussion? Please vote. The motion passes five-zero. Dr. Blackburn.
We move on to item G-21 on job description, employment specialist five.
What are the wishes of the Board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Duskevich. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Ziegler.
I would like to bring up a related topic relevant to job descriptions to get the Board's input and clarification on requirements on a particular job description. And I'm just going to speak generically. If a job requirement states that somebody has to have, say, a bachelor's degree in, in art, to teach art, and the person interviewing, interviews somebody who they think is phenomenal and talented and creative at art, but doesn't have a degree in art, is that person able to be considered? Or are they no longer a candidate because they don't have that degree in that area per the job description? In other words, my point being is today, a lot of people graduate in a specific major and don't necessarily go into that field for a profession. And I'm not sure where somebody who's learned a skillset and proven themselves in this, goes into a job where the employer goes, "Oh, you need to go back to college and get a degree in order to qualify for that job." My impression of a job description is a guideline to follow. And yes, we prefer that particular certification, but in my opinion, I think it's up to the person hiring to determine whether the person they're hiring has the capabilities. Of course, the manager hiring is held accountable for the performance of that person in their job. So I would think it would be to their discretion. It comes up because there's been some conversation about, well, if they don't have that degree, then they just don't, absolutely don't qualify at all. And I just want to give my two cents worth in that I don't think that, that the job description is that strict to disqualify. And what happens if nobody applies with that capability, but we have that certification or that degree? Yet we have competent, capable people applying. I'd like the thoughts on that.
I'll, I'll just give my two cents on it and I, I think I see our, our HR folks ready to respond to if you need additional input. But my feeling is if you look at a job description, there are minimum requirements and then there are preferred skills or certifications. I think we have to have those minimum requirements for a reason. And if something is in a minimum requirement, then I think it's a deal breaker if they don't have it. Because I think otherwise, we open ourselves up to all kinds of potential discrimination lawsuits and all kinds of craziness. So I think we have to be careful about what we choose for minimum requirements to ensure that they are giving us enough leeway to get the people into the positions that we want. And then include those optional things in preferred skills. But I don't think that we want to waiver on those minimum requirements. From my experience in the business world, I think that just is a dangerous thing, but I'll certainly allow my other peers to discuss.
I just have a question on that because if I look at this job description, we have qualifications at the top. Are those considered the minimum requirements? It doesn't say minimum requirements. And it's, at least this one, it's, it's, it's vague. It just says an AA or an AS preferred. It's not, luckily, it's not a specific degree.
Right. So on that one, the high school diploma is required and an AA or an AS is preferred. So if they don't have a high school diploma, then they wouldn't be considered for the position. But we may consider them if they don't have an AS, if they have great experience that they're bringing to the table. Is that HR, am I on target there? Okay. I'm giving a thumbs up. Mr. Susan.
So in many instances inside the school system, there's something called experience. And in many cases here in this school system, we've actually waived some of those requirements in the event that there, the experience supersedes that. So meaning that if you spend time inside the school system and you have experience in a specific area, that may supersede the fact that you needed a degree from a specific area. And there are stated and there's examples inside our school system for that. I also know from the fact that the labor attorneys have, will very rarely take any of these types of cases up because they're very hard to argue when you have that experience inside there. So whereas I agree with the minimum requirements, in some cases, there are cases where experience will supersede those minimum requirements.
I would cautiously state, Mr. Susan, that there are lots of things that have been done in the past that wouldn't pass muster at this point in time with the current Board and Administration. So I would, I would just caution us to use, because it's been done in the past, as our guidance going forward. My concern.
And, and, and current labor attorneys would make the argument that it's very difficult to argue the experience piece over that. Besides what we did prior in our past, that's current. Thank you.
Any additional discussion?
Well, then I would ask our Attorney if she's aware of any labor laws that dictate that you follow a job description requirement, minimum requirement to a T or be subject to some sort of liability.
It's going to be looked at by a case-by-case basis. So you have to look to see what your job requirements say. If it says a high school diploma is required, then you need to have a high school diploma. Usually when job descriptions are written, they contemplate experience. If you're looking at the employment specialist one there, it contemplates three years of progressively responsible administrative experience, human resources-related experience. I'll give you an example for my paralegal. I require them to have a paralegal certificate. So I did not look at anybody who did not have that paralegal certificate just because that was what I needed for my job. So it kind of is a case-by-case basis based on your job description. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it does. And I guess then, from what you're all saying, that the person writing the job description would have to write it in a manner of minimum requirements, this or equivalent in experience. And that way, then they have the flexibility when hiring to choose somebody that doesn't have, say, that, that degree, they have a degree in something, but not in that subject, but they've got plenty of experience that they feel qualifies as equal capability. So I guess that would be the direction then to staff when writing job descriptions is if they feel they need that flexibility to include that in the way they word the job description. Okay? That works.
And I think, Mr. Ziegler, part of what we have going on in HR, I'm, I'm sure, I know you referenced earlier the superintendent's update that you had read through. Part of the information that was in there is some of the work that's going on in HR with them standardizing some of our job descriptions and, and looking to make sure that we have everything done appropriately within those. So that's, this is part of what's being brought forward as part of that process. But we have staff that is specifically working on going through all those and making sure that we have alignment.
Yeah, I just, I'm not picking on any of these job descriptions. I would just bring it up because it's, it's just a topic of conversation.
Mr. Susan.
How long of a turnaround is it to change a job description? How long is that? Shouldn't that be pretty fairly quickly?
Well, it's at least a month if it's coming before us, Dr. Kim.
Or two weeks.
About a month.
At least a month.
Depends on our Board's schedule.
Got it. Because you can just, instead of going through the process, you can just change the job.
Any additional discussion?
No, ma'am.
Excellent. Then I'll take a vote, please. All right, the motion passes five-zero. Dr. Blackburn.
Item G-22 is on job description, human resource information systems analysis.
What is, what are the wishes of the Board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Mr. Ziegler to approve item G-22. Is there any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Please vote. The motion passes five-zero. Dr. Blackburn.
Item G-22 is on job description, human resource information systems analysis.
What is, what are the wishes of the Board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Mr. Ziegler to approve item G-22. Is there any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Please vote. The motion passes five-zero.
Item G-23 is on job description, coordinator communications and engagement programs.
What are the wishes of the Board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Mr. Ziegler. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Please vote. Motion passes five-zero. Dr. Blackburn.
Item G-24 is on job description, assistant director psychological services.
What are the wishes of the Board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Mr. Ziegler. Any discussion? Please vote. Dr. Blackburn.
And last but certainly not least, item G-25 is on job description, property accounting supervisor.
What are the wishes of the Board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Mr. Ziegler. You guys are on a roll. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Please vote. The motion passes five-zero. We will now move on to the information agenda, which includes items for Board review and will be brought back for action at a subsequent meeting. No action will be taken on these items tonight. Dr. Blackburn.
Mrs. Belford, there is only one item under the information category.
Does any member wish to discuss this item?
No, ma'am.
All right. We are now at the Board Member Reports and Discussion Point section. In addition to discussion points, I request that Board members please include any information requests to be placed on Board assigned tasks during this time as well. Any Board Member Reports or Discussion Points? Mr. Susan.
Real fast, that construction on that Viera Boulevard starts at the end of October. So I may make a motion to start to look into whatever the process is about busing that area through there so that we don't have any instances where the kids are, are getting hit.
Have you touched base with staff on that?
I did, but I didn't know if that takes Board approval or how that works.
Yeah, it's, no. I mean, if, if it is, if it is something that requires Board approval, then staff would bring it for Board approval.
then staff would bring it for board approval, but I think the first step is for you to speak with them and let them, since they're the experts in their realm.
They'll jump in if need be and do it. Just do it.
Perfect.
Anything else? Mr. Craig.
Attended the Brevard Schools Foundation monthly meeting on Thursday. Always great turnout. Couple of things that came out of it. First of all, OneBlood gave their quarterly check, if you don't know. So we bring the, the OneBlood brings the blood donation buses to high schools, right? And then they get a, for every student that donates blood, money's donated back to the, to the school. And so they wrote, gave a check for over $13,000 for the last quarter of, of last year. So pretty cool that we've got that many students participating and understanding the value of, of blood. And it's interesting that when she did mention, I was talking about in Brevard County specific, well, I guess blood can stay on the shelf for, and it was somewhere around six or seven days or something. In Brevard County, the shelf life is about 48 hours or a little less, 46 hours. That's how quickly we are using blood in this county. So definitely a demand for it and a need, so thanks to all of our employees and students that donate that and certainly helps when we get money back. Launch to Success is a program that the Schools Foundation started as part of their community outreach, trying to tell the community what the Brevard Schools Foundation does on a daily and a basis to interact and support our student, interact with and support our students, our teachers, our staff. And it's a pretty cool program. It's about a 45-minute to an hour presentation, a little bit of a tour. Sometimes it happens up at the school supply zone up in Clear Lake. Sometimes it'll just be over coffee here, sometimes it'll be in the building or at a school. But I encourage each of the board members to, to try and attend one of those and I'll send out a schedule of when they are. Each of the board members of the Schools Foundation signs up to host one of those and then three or four of the, of the community members come in and it's a nice opportunity to see exactly what the Schools Foundation does and the impact that they make. And it's had great success, pardon the pun. Take Stock in Children, their gala is coming up on the 9th of September. It's at the O'Gallia Club. If you've never gone to that, it's a really nice evolution. Beautiful evening, some great prizes and, or auction items. Usually the sheriff's there auctioning things, you know how that goes because he wrestles money out of anybody. But if you have an opportunity or you know anybody that would be interested in supporting Take Stock in Children, again, one of our, our keystone or corner, key, key programs of the Schools Foundation, September 9th. And I know you can get more information back at, at their offices, back at Janus's office, so that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Any other board members have any discussion items?
I have just one quick one. You all may have seen the email from FSBA requesting legislative platform input. So if you did not see that, I'll be more than happy to forward it to you. They're asking for us to submit items to the legislative platform for the, the FSBA agenda. So if you want to put anything out there, I am unfortunately not going to be able to make the legislative committee meeting because it's the same day as our retreat, so I won't be there for that, but there will be follow-up meetings. So if there's anything you would like for me to bring to the table, let me know. And that's all I have. Dr. Blackburn, anything else you'd like to report? There being no further business, this meeting is now adjourned. Have a great evening.